Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of January 29th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is the submission of minutes of previous meetings, item A1.
Motion to approve?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we're going to make a change in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move up item I4 to the top of the agenda.
Second. There's a motion and a second to move I4 forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I had, I think it's worthwhile for all of our residents to know that we have an ordinance in town that requires every record owner of a building abutting a street in the town shall affix to the building its assigned number as established by the town. And then there's another part called placement. It says that all numbers affixed to a building shall be conspicuously placed near the main entrance to the premises and be plainly visible from the street on which the property abuts. Numbers shall not be less than four inches in height and shall be in contrasting color to the building. And I've invited Sergeant Murato to tell us why we have that ordinance.
Welcome, Sergeant.
Good evening, members of the council, chief, Town Administrator. I thought it would be a wild worth effort to educate the public on this ordinance. Being in public safety, and I can speak for myself, I've experienced this. I know members of rescue have also experienced this. When we're out at night, even during the day, we're trying to find a caller, a resident, to try to help them, we run into issues where we simply cannot find a house number for whatever reason. We find ourselves, at times, we're looking behind bushes, we're looking behind mailboxes, what pertains to what, and it's very frustrating. And as everybody knows, every second counts, right? So I started this campaign, which I stole the idea called "Is Your Number Up?", from Mr. Wilson, one of our rescue volunteers for many years. And when I bring this up, "Is Your Number Up?", I figured it was a catchy, you know, phrase, and a lot of people started asking me, "Do you mean, like, is your number up? Like, should I call Lima's Funeral Home?" I'm like, "No." "Is Your Number Up?", meaning, "Is Your Number on Your Property?".
I would have asked the same question.
Well, it's one of these things where it's a catchy phrase, but in all seriousness, it's a, I just like to educate the public on that. I have a quick blurb. So, lives are at risk because emergency crews cannot see house numbers. As illness and injuries can occur at any time, I ask you to ensure your house number is clearly visible from the road by day and night, so that when we need you, emergency services such as police and rescue can locate you. Some of these numbers, the ordinance states where to place them, I honestly, I would encourage the public to place it anywhere around the front door, whether it be at the bottom, the top, side, left, right, and especially in a place where it's lit by a porch light or something like that. As you know, some of the streets in Bristol, one in particular could commute, the numbers are all over the place. They range from 26 to 48, and sometimes we're lucky enough to get the caller to come out to wave us down, but if it's the caller that's in need, it's just, it's going to take us time to get there. So, in closing, I just want to add, if you think of anything, think about all the, you know, the food apps nowadays. So if you don't want your food to get to your house cold, make sure you put the numbers up.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you. So Sergeant, before you leave, a quick question for you. If I'm a resident, and I am, and I want to know the best placement, and you did go through it, but how would I, what should I reference? How do I go back and say, "This is a good way of doing this"?
So, we do have a town ordinance, it's section 79 S-79, 1972, Bristol Town Ordinance. Keep in mind, if you have, just have a contrasting number to the house color. So if your house is blue, black, white, or any number that, they sell those reflective numbers where we shine the light at night, we can clearly see. But I would recommend anywhere near that front door, the front entry, front porch. You know, a lot of people put numbers on their step, mailboxes, but some of the mailboxes, sometimes they're across the street. So it's best for emergency services to locate the house if the number's right on the house. That way, when we drive by, we shine the light, we can, we know which house to respond to.
Perfect. Excellent.
Just had a question, too, on the apartment complexes and the units, especially the big ones over near Roma Street, and sometimes when you go up the stairs, it's very confusing as to what unit you're walking up to and going there. Are you, are there any suggestions on how landlords can clearly mark that way if rescue's trying to get in, they know it's 3B, and they know exactly, "Oh, I got to go up"?
Correct. That's a great point. That's a great question. I'm glad you asked. It's political.
Did you guys plan this before the meeting?
That's a great point. So we do, we do run into those situations in multifamily homes, and it is helpful when the numbers are properly labeled, you know, 1B, 1 South, or 2B. And when the caller calls us, we look for those house numbers. We find ourselves a lot of times in those multifamily homes knocking on several doors before we find the person that called us. Or we have the dispatcher actually call, return that phone call, so we can hear where the phone is ringing, so we can find a proper apartment. But that's a good point, and that's also something to consider even as a renter, right?
So it sounds like you should mark up your front door as if your life depended on it, because it might.
Correct. Especially for those, especially for elderly, you know, residents and residents that have medical conditions, and they know that we frequent their homes, and some of us already know, you know, when a call comes in, we already know the house, right? But you can have someone new on the truck, or someone new on rescue, or someone new on the job, and they're not going to know. They don't know Mrs. Smith of such-and-such, you know, whatever. So it is a good idea. It's very simple. It's cost-effective. So just something that should be followed as far as the ordinance.
Is it preferred either side? I mean, the right, left side of the door? I'm not sure. Does the ordinance specifically, no? So is there a preferred side, so it's easier to take that quick glance and identify the address?
Well, what I recommend, the first, the first location, wherever your porch light, if it's on the right side or left side of the door, put the numbers right underneath it. If you don't have a porch light, then try to see if maybe you can get one of those reflective numbers, so when we hit the light, shine the spotlight, we can easily find you. But I would prefer anywhere around that front door, or on the front door. It's the easiest way for us to locate it, so.
Thank you, Sergeant.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we need a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The next item on this evening's agenda is item C1, which is the first reading of ordinance 2020-01, and this has to do with mobile food establishments, also known as food trucks.
So this has been continued a couple of times. This has been reworked by the solicitor and his office to hopefully closely reflect the conversation that we had going back beginning of December in regards to this. But I wanted to, normally, this would just be a first reading, we would stop right there, but I just wanted to make sure that there was no questions before we took the next step.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a few questions, but, go ahead, Mary. Yeah?
Thanks. I had a couple of questions, just to, my own clarification. I was, I think it addresses it, but I just want to make sure. So I'm looking at 19-121, and...
Which is the restrictions on municipal permits, right?
And then also a couple of the others on permit fees. So I am wondering if, so I think it says here, you know, that for the Fourth of July, the temporary mass gathering under the Fourth of July, that is for the whole time of there, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly.
So it's not just the day, it's like for that two weeks of the concerts, et cetera, right?
Yes.
Now, what about, and then, let me just go back down to the Fourth of July on 19-130. Do they end up paying twice? Because I thought $300 is kind of a lot of money. You know, I know the Fourth of July committee charges a certain amount, but do they have to be, are they paying twice then?
So, the fee, that is an up-to fee. You can change that fee. That's the maximum fee you can charge.
I know that the, I mean, I, you know, I hear that they charge a lot for the people that go down there, and so they have to sell. I just don't know if they're going to have to have a separate fee for the town, if they only go to the Fourth of July event.
Yeah. Under this ordinance, there would be a separate town fee. However, the $75 and the 300 that you see referenced in 127, those are the not-to-exceed fees that state law provides. Some towns have used those fees, some towns have reduced the 75 to 25, the 300 to 100. It's really, and you can do that at the public hearing. You know, what we're doing is identifying questions and issues. I'm making notes, and between now and the public hearing, we can certainly deal with changes to those.
Okay. I mean, and then the other thing...
Second meeting, I should say. Sorry, the second meeting.
The other thing is, I know I mentioned a couple of times, just because they had it, I'm not sure where it fits in. The fire department a few times had that fundraiser, you know, like a fundraiser where they had a food truck festival.
Right.
And there may be 10 or 12 for like a one day, one afternoon kind of thing. If they're trying to raise money for one of their firehouses, I don't think they should have to pay for that one day. So where does that fit into here? Because I don't, I see the Fourth of July address, but I don't see something like a municipal organization, like if we were going to have something, you know, one of our, one of our entities. Parks and Recs wants to do a fundraiser, you know?
Right. So what you're looking for in the fee section, in section 127, is when we establish these fees, that we have an exemption for town-sponsored entities, right? We, I can do that for you.
Okay. And then my last question is this. On the hours on the 19-123, I found it interesting in two ways. One was hours of operation for the itinerant, which are like the ice cream trucks and lemonade and so forth, that they were limited from 8:00 to 5:00 downtown, and 8:00 to sunset elsewhere. So, I mean, there are people, and I understand that, you know, you've defined downtown as a pretty big area, which I agree with, but I don't, I mean, there are people that live downtown, kids that live downtown. I don't think that 5:00 is appropriate, like in the summer when the ice cream or the lemonade trucks are going by. I think that should be the same everywhere, sunset. And they also have a big concern about the midnight. I think that's way too late for other events, you know, I don't, especially on public property. I think it should be 10:30 or 11:00. That's just my opinion.
So before we go any farther on that, obviously, this is first reading. I think it's a, it's a fair point. Is it fair to say that at second reading, those changes could happen, and they're not substantive enough?
That is correct.
Correct? So we can make those changes at second reading?
Absolutely.
Okay. Again, Mary, I think it's a great point.
I think these hours were based on feedback, so I'm glad we're hearing it publicly.
But if we made a change at second reading, which would be at our next meeting, we'd be fine with that?
Sure. But, so your suggestion, so I know that it says 8:00 to sunset for the itinerant MFEs, and you would bring it back from midnight to 10:30 or 11:00?
Well, I think a private event on public property, the private event, the public event on, no.
Private event on public property, you want to bring that back?
Yeah, and I think, a public event on public property. I don't think, I think midnight is way too late.
So should I put 11:00 in for purposes of, you know?
I would think, I would think 10:30 or 11:00, yes. That's what I would go for.
And we can leave that for discussion at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
And can I just ask one other last thing, and that is, the farmer's market at, I think I answered this myself, but the farmer's market at Monhope Farm, they, they would be the public event on private property, so they wouldn't have a restriction on how many per year, correct?
No.
Okay. Because I wasn't, I was confused between the private event and private, they're the public event and private, right?
They're public event and private.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Tim?
Yeah. Mike, I just had a question on the table. It says cap on permits, the food truck, private events on private property, it says two times per a year, per location. So just take me through it. If Blythwald had two weddings, they wanted food trucks until midnight, does that mean we're capped? So Monhope Farm now can't have anything?
Right. So, again, that was based on feedback. There's not, that's not in the statute anywhere, the state statute. That can be changed.
That could be changed. Great. Because I would, I would think my colleagues would want to change that. We don't want to restrict it just two times.
You can put no cap, right? Like the others say no, you can put no if you want. You can make it six times. It's really up to you. I'm going to put a question mark here. Putting a no with a question mark, and then at second reading, you can decide if you want to either no or put a number in there, 12 times, 10 times.
What would be the rationale for having a cap on that particular, like, private event on private property?
I think what you're trying to avoid is someone at their house in a residential area having a social event every weekend, or a party every night.
And then it would, then they can't, now we can't have anything else because they belong to the cap.
Yeah, that's, that's what that...
Well, actually, I think we're...
As related to Blythwald in particular, that's not in a residential zone. That's in a different zone.
Different zone, right.
So that wouldn't necessarily have the same cap.
It did say, I guess, these are great, these are great points. My concern is, I don't want to go too far. This is first reading, and I think these are great, and as I said, there's questions that need to come up. I wanted to, everyone to know that we have some flexibility here, that I think some great points have been brought up, so we can talk about this at second reading, make those changes at second reading. The reason why I keep reiterating this is that it's been our past practice, and it's good practice, that first reading, we don't get too deep into these things, because if you're interested in sharing feedback, we do that at the second reading.
Right. And I would also add that Tim or anyone else on the council, if you have other thoughts on this, contact me. And, you know, so when I come at the next meeting, we'll be ready to, actually, I'll be on vacation at the next meeting, my partner, Andy Tyson, will be here. So he'll be ready with all...
Was that done purpose then, Mike? Because that was an excellent job.
All right. All right, yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll hold my questions, and I'll...
No, I went to, I'm so sorry. I don't mean, I didn't mean to limit that conversation. I just want to make sure that we stay in kind of our past practice, which was kind of, again, these points are really good, and I think they need to be addressed. What this, this whole conversation started off because the state passed a law that said that food trucks can go anywhere at any time unless you zone accordingly. The reason why we're having so much conversation is that we thought initially that this would be a straightforward, we'll just do this, this, and that, and then as you open this up and start looking at, well, how do you limit, as you've heard some of the conversation, how do you limit this but not limit that? We've kind of worked into a whole challenge here, and our goal as the council, there's a lot of goals. One of them was to make sure that we were protecting our local restaurants, and there wasn't a food truck that would park in front of Ricotti's, for example, and sell hamburgers. That's Ricotti's employees, and I'm just using them as an example, and I really like Ricotti's, but they have great hamburgers and sandwiches and all of that, and it would be, and they employ people, and they pay taxes and property tax, and it's not the same field. And we, and they'll get requests like other restaurants to support local events, where that wouldn't necessarily happen with a food truck. So we were very concerned and cognizant, but yet, we weren't trying to limit them. So that's a really long way of saying, this is really hard, and we thought it wasn't going to be that difficult, but these are great questions. Let's make sure, did we skip anything? Did anybody else have anything that we wanted to consider for the next meeting?
I just had one other thing to mention, and it's section 19-125, and it's just on the compliance of other laws and regulations. I just didn't know, Mike, on the litter recycling requirement, if we need to do anything, but I guess it shall comply with all town ordinances.
Yeah, it's pretty broad, so that'd be covered, health concerns.
That's covered.
All covered.
And the food safety, that sort of thing? Okay.
Got it all there.
Okay.
All right.
So we need a motion that this would constitute first reading with the suggested changes. How's that?
Sure.
So moved.
There's a motion. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Excellent. So I had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work.
Next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is item D1, and this is the petition of Denise Oshola on behalf of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, asking for a one-day dancing and entertainment license for the days July 16th through 19th, 2020. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police.
Move that we approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is the petition of Carly Riche for the Bristol Warren Education Foundation regarding their request for a one-day dancing and entertainment license for their annual vogue issue speed on March 7th. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police.
Motion to approve the petition for bingo license?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, in this section, item D3 is the petition of Diane Maderis for the East Bay Community Development Corporation regarding her request for two bingo licenses, March 4th and June 3rd, 2020. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police.
Based on the recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is a first petition, item F1. This is the petition of the Reverend Henry Pizzino, pastor of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, regarding the, their annual feast. They would ask council permission to have the feast on the town common from July 16th through July 19th, with a setup and dismantle period before and after, as so noted, and also to request the opportunity to sell and serve alcoholic beverages on town property. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, Director of Parks and Recreation, Chief of Police, and Director of Public Works.
Move that we approve with all the recommendations.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion?
Just said, I want to make a remark that it's conditional on having a detail officer will be required to be on the premise. So that's part of that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve, and I should have said with all the recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is, you have the petition of Raymond Estelleo for Gooding Realty, 16 Gooding Avenue, concerning a curb cut on Naomi Street for access to the shopping center. You have recommendations provided by the Director of Public Works and the Chief of Police. Both are asking for time to review the matter.
So this just needs to be continued to our next meeting, to refresh everybody's memory. This was part of the conversation that includes the sale of the Gooding Avenue Plaza, and this was part of the conversation that included that. We had a meeting yesterday, and I believe we're well on our way to having everything all set. So if we can just continue this to the next meeting?
Motion to continue to the February 19th meeting.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is, excuse me, petition of Armand Maderis, 40 Born Street, requests council consideration for removal of a no-longer-needed accessible parking space nearby 39 Born Street. This is the first reading.
Motion to approve the first reading for adoption?
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just with the appreciation, you know, that Mrs. Maderis came forth to let us know that we can provide an additional space there. Certainly is very appreciated in that area. You know, those folks will certainly take advantage of that, you know?
Very much a have a penny, give a penny, right? Need a penny, take a penny. So we have a lot of discussion on this council for the parking, no parking and all of that. So anytime anybody in Wellport that brings this in front of us that is no longer necessary, we very much appreciate it. So we have a motion and a second. This constitutes first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the first item in your appointment section. This is for the tree warden. You have the currently serving tree warden, Steven Saracino, requesting reappointment. You also have correspondence from the Rhode Island Department of, excuse me, the Rhode Island DEM, Division of Forestry Enforcement, that it is your responsibility to name a tree warden during the month of January, and you also have a recommendation from the Town Administrator.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to reappoint Steven Saracino.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Just very briefly, certainly haven't had the opportunity to work with Steve, you know, and I think it's a great recommendation to keep him on the task. You know, he's done a great job for the town, and we look forward for him to continue to do so. I'm sure the administrator could attest to that, a little bit more working one-on-one, you know, so.
I think Steve's done a great job, and for those of you who don't know, Steve's right there. Steve's done a great job, and one of the ways that I know that's happening is that I used to get a lot of calls about trees, and I don't get those calls about trees. And those calls were about, "I don't like what happened, so therefore, could you help me?". And that doesn't happen anymore, and that doesn't mean that you give the answer that people are looking for, but you do it in a way that is knowledge-based and professional and kind. So I think you're doing a great job. Any other discussion? All in favor?
A great job.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item G1B, and this is for the special constable fire police appointment. You have recommendations provided by the Fire Chief and Town Administrator.
Make a motion to approve as stated?
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is Bristol Housing Authority, and this is with term to expire in January of 2025. You have Raymond Cudero currently serving, who is seeking reappointment. You have the recommendations provided by the Executive Director of the Housing Authority and also the President of the Tenants Association.
I move that we reappoint Ray Cudero.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reappoint Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the North and East Barrow Grounds Commission, also known as the Commissioners of the Cemeteries, there are two positions available with term to expire in January of 2025. You have seeking reappointment Susan C. Church and also Charles Cavalcanti.
I move we appoint, reappoint both Charles Cavalcanti and Susan Church.
Second. There's a motion and a second to reappoint both, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Christmas Festival Committee, you have two applicants requesting appointment for the first time, and the recommendations of both by the General Chairperson, Joseph Kalin of 99 Peck Avenue, and Patricia Lannan of 3 Doris Avenue.
Make a motion to accept their applications.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
In the Recreation Board, and this is to fill an unexpired term to expire in February of 2021, you have the application of Michael S. Cabral of 10 Alve Street who seeks appointment.
So, for my colleagues, we will be getting to the Charter Review Committee later on in our agenda, and we're going to need to set up interviews, we could certainly set up this interview when we do those interviews, if that's acceptable to everyone.
That's fine.
So, we just need a motion.
Motion to set up an interview with Michael Cabral.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Assistant Harbor Masters, you have applications of Alan Leach, Scott Marino, John Mata, William Texera, all requesting to be reappointed. You also have a, an applicant of a currently serving auxiliary harbor master, Richard Scott Maderas, who is seeking to be appointed as an assistant harbor master, and you have two new applicants, Jonathan Maderas and Michael Van Vleek, who are seeking appointment as assistant harbor masters, and you have the recommendation of the harbor master regarding...
Mr. Chairman, just before we go on to the, to making motions, just want to clarify that William Texera is of no relationship to me, just a disclaimer there.
Not one of your kids, grandkids, no?
No. Nothing in the family tree on there, Tony, right?
He may play your son on TV, but he's not actually your son. So, why don't we break it down like this, if everybody's comfortable with it, we have some reappointments, why don't we have a motion for reappointments, and then we can have a separate motion to set interviews for interest of a new appointment.
Sure.
I move that we reappoint the list, but I believe it also includes, the harbor master is also recommending that Richard Scott Maderas be elevated to the assistant harbor master, so can we include that one in this motion as well?
It would seem appropriate since we, this, that he's already in a position of very similar ilk, so.
Yeah.
Sure. So, I heard that as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, let's have a separate one to set up interviews, and we can do it at the same time, hopefully.
Yeah.
We can.
For Jonathan Maderas, Michael Van Vleek, if I'm saying that correct, did I skip anybody?
No, but you're going to interview them first, and then we'll interview them if you think they pass muster, is that what your letter is requesting?
That's what I'm requesting.
We would certainly want your recommendation before we would interview them, so.
Because normally, when I bring the new people in, I bring them as auxiliary harbor masters, so not knowing what their experience is, you know, just to put them in that position is probably not fair for them or us.
So, before, so we'll make it as part of the motion that we'll look for your recommendation prior to our interview with them.
I'll have it in on time.
Perfect. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next is the auxili, list of auxiliary harbor masters, and the recommendation of the harbor master, I will tell you that since we published the agenda, most of the auxiliaries have sent in applications requesting reappointment. Typically, what the council has done, because the code actually says that the appointments are made based upon the recommendation of the officers in charge, okay, so the practice is fine. I think you would be certainly well within your authority to, to make the appointments based solely upon the recommendation without having the applications in hand.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, so can I just maybe ask a quick question, so are we deleting Scott, Richard Scott Maderas from this list, and so that becomes a vacancy, correct?
Yes.
This is one of those things that doesn't necessarily have a number associated with...
So, there's no maximum?
Yeah.
So, Lou, help us with that motion, please, one more time.
I think you can just, you can just appoint based upon the recommendation of the harbor master.
Can I have a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the special constables, private investigators, matrons, and retiree officers, these are one-year terms, it includes all of you, so you can, if you all recuse, then we can't vote this through, so I think the solicitor would say that it's okay for you to vote on this, considering it's an honorary position in your case, okay, and you have a recommendation of the Chief of Police.
Motion to approve as stated.
Second.
Chief, I very much appreciate you recommending that we should be on this, that's very nice of you. Thank you.
Well, I've been on this for many years, but never called upon.
No, you gotta stand out in front of the house in direct traffic.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question, and I had to ask the clerk what a special constable actually was, but I did notice a vacancy for Rep. District 68, so for the sake of accuracy, should we add Representative Nina Speikman to that vacancy?
It is traditional.
And that'll allow her, as along with us, to direct traffic in front of our own...
That's it, that's it. We all have the same verdict now.
Well, she lives in Warren, so she can't use this in Warren, it doesn't cross the state.
Gotcha. Truly ceremonial, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, in this section, we have the Charter Review Commission, you have nine positions for the council vote of, of the last meeting, you have five applicants that have identified themselves in this, before this agenda was published, Jane Lavender, Charles Kelner, Stephen Katz, Caroline Jacobus, and Peter Hewitt, since that time, we have received five additional applicants, Stephen DeLeo, Sheila Ellsworth, Charles McDonough, Diana Campbell, and maybe that's it.
Well, first, thank you to all that have put their name in to be part of the Charter Review Commission, so as we just mentioned a little bit earlier, we want to set up interviews, which would happen, is going to have to happen right away, so we'll do it sometime in February. I'll work with the clerk and my colleagues, and we'll come up with a proposed date a few weeks out. We do have a workshop that we can probably coincide with those interviews, it's going to be a busy night, but a fruitful night. The charter review was brought forth, or the conversation started from Councilman Texera to, it's a 10-year responsibility to look at our charter, and just to remind everybody, the charter is kind of our, our 5,000-foot view of our requirements for the town, they include the council, they include the administrator, they include all departments, they talk about what the council responsibilities are, what the administrator responsibilities are, and I can go on and on. I think it's very important, I've said this a couple of times, that this charter review gets clarity from this council about what we're looking to have looked at, and that doesn't mean we're going to close our eyes to suggestions and opportunities brought forth by the review, but I think it's important, I think it's imperative, that, that guidance comes from this council about what is, what should be considered. I'm going to give you a couple of examples, in talking with the administrator, currently our charter says that we have to go out to bid for anything that's over $5,000. The state has a similar requirement, but theirs is $15,000, it's a great example of a charter that's in our way of success, but quite honestly, I've looked through the charter, and I'm sure all of you have, at length, and there isn't much there that's in our way, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't review it, but we can take steps like, for example, that one, and have it mirror the state, not put a dollar figure on it, so we don't ever have to change it again. As the state goes up, so will, so will our number, and it will be appropriate, and it's a great way of, of saving time, right now, we have to go out to bid at a $6,000 project, and that slows down things. There should be a cap, and I think it's reasonable where the state is right now, and certainly, that's what we'll talk about. The other part is that I think we all need to make sure that we take some time and figure out how many questions we want to have out there. I reached out to counterparts in other communities, other chairmen, presidents, and asked them where the challenges were, one of them was Barrington, Barrington had a recent charter review, and they had a lot of questions on it, I don't recall how many, but I think it was something like 30 or 42.
I think it was like 42.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy.
The problem with 42, as you can already see it, is that there's, the only reason why we're going to put a question on the ballot for the people of Bristol, is that we can get a yes, we're not putting it on so we get a no. You can't get 42 yeses, in my opinion, so if you can't get 42 yeses, what's the point in putting it out there? So, I think we need to look at this in a reasonable fashion and say, under five questions, I'm throwing that out as a number, but reasonable, when you think of a ballot, there's people running for council, there's people running for administrator, there's people running for clerk, there's state, there's local, I mean, it's so, and then we have bond questions that'll come up for the state sometimes locally. Long story short, we want to keep this brief, we want to keep to the point, if there's nothing that needs to be changed, it's okay, other things that have been brought up, in fact, Tony brought it up, and the clerk brought it up, about having someone help us through this, and the person that has helped most of the communities through this is no longer on God's green earth, the clerk looked it up, he was a phenomenal person to walk you through the process, and, and everybody referenced back to him, I guess he'd done it since the 70s, but he's no longer there. Our solicitor suggested that his office could help us with this, here's the point, is that we want to make sure that this is a fruitful process, that we don't go down the rabbit hole on things we don't need to change, and definitely take a look at the things we do. Another example is, currently, we're two-year terms, should we look at four-year terms? Initially, you go, well, is that a good thing? Well, it potentially could be, I personally think you're more, I think you have to hold somebody closer to making sure they get their things done, if they can't do it in four years, I think that you can hold them accountable to that even that much closer, and whatever changes wouldn't take effect until the next council, so, meaning that wouldn't happen until 2022, so whatever decisions that are ultimately made, so, I'm almost done, I swear. This would need to go to the review and then come back to the council, council ultimately makes the call on what makes it to the ballot, it would need to go to the state, as the clerk pointed out, we have some hard stop times, and I think this is, this is my final point, I think it's really important that if we're not able to do those things in a timely fashion and make it 100%, I don't think we should, I don't, I think we should have this review, but if we're not able to have this ready to go, perfect and, and ready for the people of Bristol to look at, then maybe we wait till 2022 to actually put it on the ballot. My point is to say, let's not put an artificial stop time on things that are too important, these last for 10 years, and they don't have to, but most of the time they do, so let's make sure we do a good job at that. I don't normally share that much info, but I thought it was really important, and again, this was Councilman Texera that had brought this forward, and I think it's appropriate that we have this conversation. Did I not cover anything? Anybody want?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the background, I just wanted to talk about the timeline with my colleagues, just that, so if we're going to do the interviews in February, we're hoping to kick them, you know, have a kickoff meeting by what, by March 1st, which would give them three months, and Lou, when do they, recommendations, it'd be in early June or end of June? I'm just trying to understand the timeline here.
I'm trying to remember from my earlier memo, to be honest, I think it was pretty early, pretty early in the process that they actually, in June, that they have to get to the Secretary of State in order to be included on the ballot.
So, let's assume June 1st, how's that?
June 1st, okay, great.
I don't think they go to the State House.
And we, the five of us get to appoint who we want as individuals, so that's five, and then collectively, we will vote...
Plus the administrator, we said, so one for the administrator.
And one for the administrator.
So, six.
Six.
Yep.
Okay, all right, and so then we would vote two after the interviews, correct?
I guess my, my question at this point is, is there a desire to collectively interview all the candidates, or the ones that would remain after, if in fact, any of you choose the ones that are currently on the list?
I would like to interview them all myself, that's my personal opinion.
So would I.
And that would include, like, if there's somebody else that we're thinking of to try to get them to come forward, that we might be wanting to choose ourselves, I mean, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the council controls the process, so you just tell me what you want to do, that's fine.
So, so just to be clear, we don't necessarily, if we have somebody in mind, they don't necessarily have to go through the interview process?
That's what we had discussed prior, so I agree with what you just said, yes, that's what we talked about, and as the clerk pointed out, that's up to us, if we want to change that, I, I think it expedites the process if it is, if you have an appointee, that they don't have to go through that process, it's your appointee, they represent you, hopefully, and, and ultimately, the 23,000 people of Bristol, right?
So, for me, Mr. Chairman, that person is on the list for my appointee, do I need to state that now, or do I just need to write an email to you and the town clerk of how I'm going to appoint, so we don't have to interview that particular...
I don't think you need to state it right now, I would say that we can, we'll set up interviews, and then we can omit those that are going to be appointments, if there are, you've mentioned one, so.
Yep.
I think that would be the quickest and easiest way, so there's no, you don't have to go through that this evening?
Perfect.
If, unless anybody has objection to that?
I, I think that's pretty clear, I was going to ask the same question, but if we have that attitude to actually select someone who's currently on the list, you know, and that we'd be one less to be interviewed, obviously, could speed up the process a little bit.
So, again, it's great that so many people put their name in, if you're interested, the charter is about 23 pages, something like that, and it's, it's actually pretty straightforward, taking a moment to go through it, take a look at it, it's online, it's on our website, it's very easy to find, and take a look at it and see what you think, if you're interested, put your name in. I don't, Tony, you were part of the last charter review, and, and obviously, there's been some before that, what is the typical time commitment one could expect, or what was it in the past, how's that?
We had about 12 meetings, you know, and we met pretty often because we needed to, we knew that there was a timeline, you know, in order to present to the council the recommendations, you know.
Okay, so that's a, that's a good ballpark to use, if you're interested in doing it, and we're interested in having your name in, so the more people put their name in, the more that we can talk to, and the more points of view that we'll get.
Although, you know, I can tell you from, we did have quite a bit of substance that we moved around, I am not seeing as much, having said, in the charter commission, and now, as, as, you know, a council and administrator, I don't see that we need to move as many items as we did before, you know, I think that there is a few that we need to, and you've already stated a couple of them, and certainly, there'll be a few others that we need to consider, well, we should propose, I should say.
Should we, Jane, how do we propose that, like, if we have some thoughts of things that might, we might want to look at, should we just send you an email about that, or...
Yes, let's do that, I think that's, I think that's an excellent idea, and we can compose a list of, of what we, what we want to focus on, or what we believe, and then that can be part of our discussion, what I think it would make a lot of sense is, let's do that, so let's get some preliminary ideas, we interview candidates, we appoint nine people total, and then at that, we go to that meeting, this council holds that next meeting, that first meeting for the review, and expresses what we believe should be the focus, and again, let me say it one more time, obviously, we're not saying that we don't want to hear new ideas, but let's give a clear idea of what we're looking for, and what we believe should be focused on, and that would happen, as Councilman Swinney pointed out, should make sense that it would be the first week in March or so, would be an appropriate first meeting for the charter review.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, it does.
I just have one more question for the solicitor, if this town solicitor's involved in this, you could probably expect that would speed things along a little bit too, because then people won't be spinning their wheels over process and, and things like that.
We'll smooth all that out, I think the committee needs to focus on the overall policy-type issues that they want changed, we can work on wordsmithing everything, et cetera.
What didn't we cover that we wanted to?
Just very quick, so if you provide some guidance for the committee, and you also will be reviewing, or is already being part of the process as you go through it, to make sure the legalities that are...
Absolutely, yes, we'll be there to help the committee out with all of that.
Got you.
And just to confirm, Mr. Chairman, the, the vote's going to be on, in February for the, during the interview, after the interviews?
I would say that's most appropriate.
Okay, so we'll be voting on the three candidates, at-large candidates, and then we'll make our individual appointments?
Well, I think we can, I don't know if there's a, a yes and no on there, but that makes sense that we'll handle our own appointments plus appoint the three at-large candidates at that point, so.
Okay.
At the end of that conversation, we will have nine Charter Review Commission members, and a meeting set up in, I would say, the first week in March, seems appropriate, obviously, we'll work with everyone's schedule, but that seems appropriate, and then set it up in that first week in March, I think this council should be present, give clarity to the charter review what we want, and then also tell them that we're open to suggestions and possibilities.
Okay, can I just suggest that I do think that, like, I've never really been involved with, I mean, I know, I know the legislature has done this, but, you know, where, where we appoint someone, I do think we should know, I think we should list out our appointees before we pick the at-large, because I think you want to see a balance of people in terms of, like, are they all business people, are they all political people, are they all whatever, and, you know, like, I feel strongly that there should be, like, a former administrator on there, it's really only, because Tony's on the council, there's only really two that I can think of that, you know, might want to serve, and, so I think we should kind of look at that, and then kind of see, it might, it just, it might help inform, like, for me, who we, I would want to select from the three at-large.
So, you're saying, know what our appointments are prior, so we could help formulate who we want to fill in the blanks with, if, if said another way?
Yeah, I don't necessarily mean, like, before the interviews, but just like before we take a vote on them.
That makes total sense, yeah, I honestly, I don't think we need to, to go through all the points right now, but that's a great point, and it's, I think it's, it's a great way of saying, let's make, if, if my appointment is mine and is non-negotiable, yours is yours and non-negotiable, let's make sure we're filling in where it's necessary, that's a fair point, so. Anything else? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, or Mr. Solicitor, help us with that, what do we need for, do we need a, a motion that incorporates all that we spoke about, as in, we'll set up an interview and...
I assume you're not going to do these interviews at your February 19th meeting, you've got...
Prior to that.
Be prior to that, so, but what, what we will do is continue the matter of the appointment of the Charter Review Commission to your February 19th.
Perfect.
So moved.
Second, there's a motion and a second to continue, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is item I-1, put on the agenda at the request of the chairman regarding recent land acquisitions.
So, this motivation came from, I thought it was really important that the public knows what public land belongs to the public, there's been a lot of efforts from this town, this council, this administrator, employees of the town, and prior administrators and prior councils, this is not just this current, I asked Diane Williamson to list what has been purchased, what has been donated, and I'm going to hand this off to you and talk through that, but the motivation was, on top of the list is Gibson Pond... that. But the motivation was, on top of the list is Gibson Pond. So if you go down Gibson Road, and if you lived in Bristol, you already know what I'm talking about, but if you haven't, you go down Gibson Road, there's Gibson Pond, which is Children's Grove, and that was donated back to the town, or donated to the town. And that happened back in August of last year, and unfortunately, this council didn't know that that actually got finalized. It just kind of brought to my attention that I think it was important that the public and the council know all of what belongs to the public and why. So Diane, off to you.
Thank you. So we looked back for six years to prepare this list, which you have, and I'm, I'm really pleased to say that of this list, 44 acres of open space has been preserved in the town, and that includes where you've acquired it outright purchase, purchase of development rights, donations, and subdivision dedications through the planning board's approvals. Of the 44 acres, just a little over 18 acres were donated properties, which I think is fantastic, and we still have more on the list, which we hope to see soon. But then, there were about four that were subdivision dedications. There were 14 that were Fee Simple Open Space, and seven were purchase of development rights. And of the 21 acres that were Fee Simple and...
Diane, would you explain to everybody what Fee Simple means?
Okay. So Fee Simple is where we bought the entire property, the land, as well as the, the rights for the development of it. So Perry Farm is an example of the property where it's pure land owned by the town. There are trails, and the public can walk through there and do what, what you would do in a, in a recreational area. The farmland, there were farms that were purchased where the development rights were purchased, where the farmer still owns it, because we want the farmer to keep farming it, or subsequent farmers to keep farming it. But the town was able to acquire the development rights, which means it would never be, it would never be developed. It will never be built on. And so we do the open space and the farmland acquisition. We leverage the town's funds, and we get grant money for that. And so 21 acres of the total were partners with the DEM and the Natural Resource Conservation Service for the purchase of those, of those properties. And then there was, just under an acre of land that was purchased for infrastructure, a parking lot, the Prudence Ferry Dock, and then there was some property acquired for the sewer project down by the water treatment plant. So that's sort of it in a, in a little nutshell there. And I want to, you know, thank the donors for coming forward, and everybody else who kept moving forward. Some of these properties are floodplain. We participate in the community rating system, which gives folks that have flood insurance, including the town, a discount on their premiums. And so eight acres were floodplain, so we were able to include that in our recertification this year, so we might get a little bit more, a few more points on that for a discount. So it's all, you know, it all, it all is part of fulfilling the comprehensive plan, the natural hazard mitigation plan, the open space plan, and I'm very pleased to present this list to you.
I think it's outstanding. I think that there are so, the reason why we do these things is for, well, it's a multitude of reasons, but if you've ever sold land to the town and you've been in executive session, the amount of time that we take talking about, is it needed? Should we spend taxpayer dollars on this? Is it appropriate? Is it, if we don't buy it, will it still be open land forever? Is it necessary to spend taxpayer dollars on this? And in all of these instances, whether it was for open space or for improvement, for Prudence Island Ferry Dock, for example, those, we, this council and prior councils and administrators and employees said, yes, this makes sense. And if you look around, off Metacom Ave, right across the street from Fatima, is a wonderful walking trail, right? And that's one example. We're continuing to do a great job, and we're going to do an even better job in labeling those. You know what belongs to you, and that you can go down there, and it's accessible, and no one can stop you from doing that. And it reminds me of prior director, Walter Burke, who was a big fan of those granite blocks, and he wasn't the only one that did that. But those granite blocks are, are so important because Bristol does a great job of making sure that you can actually get to the water, and that no one can stop you. And that granite block tells everyone that you have the right to go down there. And I think that's outstanding.
And when are we going to have our little ribbon cutting officially, a few years late for the right-of-way down in Hopeforth?
Clipper Way. Yeah. If you drive down the bottom of Hopeforth, as Mary pointed out, we had a little joke about that one, bless you, that if you drive down Hopeforth and then turn the corner of Clipper Way, and what's the name of that? I'm sorry.
Viking.
Viking. Thank you. There's access to the waterfront over there that is clearly marked. It doesn't have a granite marker, but it does have granite mark, it does have a granite marker, and, and a great sign over there. And Greg, did the Boy Scouts, were they part of cleaning that up and opening that up?
Yeah. It was my son's Eagle Scout project.
Your son did a great job, because you can get down to the water now. So outstanding.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, you know, before I got into office and as a private citizen, I really didn't value this as much as when I became an administrator, I mean, a counselor, then eventually administrator, and sat through with Diane and many of our toy employees, as you've already stated, and, you know, the value that this has, you know. And not only that, not just the impressive, but the hope that I mean, a little, I see the same value, you know, how much it's appreciated by the residents. And not only that, for us to keep open space, it's so important, because many times, we get ourselves a little crowded. Not only we crowd ourselves, but we crowd the, the animal population, as we see in some of that happening now.
Yeah. 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 I'm super proud with that. We purchased all this property. I think what sells Bristol is this open space. I mean, people come down here, and they're looking for properties and a safe, healthy place to live. And then you walk around, you see all the parks, and we're not on top of each other. I think it's, you know, it goes a long way. I think we're way ahead of a lot of other communities that are really overdeveloping. So, you know, kudos to us.
So we just need a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second, there's a motion and a second to receive and file. Thank you, Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town councils, from my office regarding the annual budget workshop and adoption schedule, I would make one suggestion. I did get a request yesterday to change the Fourth of July interview with the council to March 17th. So with that change, I would recommend that you adopt this schedule.
Isn't March 17th St. Patrick's Day?
It is.
Isn't it? Okay. Is that okay? Can we have both of those happen?
Are you responsible for the green beer?
Yeah, okay. All right. So you're asking if I buy in the first round? Okay.
Mary, we'll get our food truck right out front.
Does anybody have objection to the clerk's request to move the Fourth of July committee to the 17th? No? Okay. So we just need a motion?
We can do.
We just need a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And of course, Zabeli's, too.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Guess I'll have St. Joseph's stay in there.
That's right.
The next item is item I-3, and this is the, the annual review of the financial statements by our auditors.
Raquel, I believe this is your part of the show. Why don't you start us off?
My thanks to both, Mary Spahle and Kara Lee, who are on the front page.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as, as Raquel just indicated, I am the partner with the firm of Haagen-Suhati. I've been with the firm for a little bit over 40 years at this particular point.
Don't like it at all, huh?
I started when I was two. Kara Lee is the manager on, in the field, and she's been in the governmental arena for over 19 years. She was with us originally. She left for a little while to work for the Bridgewater State University, and she is back managing our audit staff. So I'm happy to have her back. I'm also happy to, to tell you, or to thank you, really, for all the help all of your staff did with regard to putting together the document and providing us with the underlying source information, so that we can opine on these financial statements. In particular, Julie, I know she had left, but she came back.
She never left, right?
She never left. She was a great help with Kara. They, they worked weekends to get the information together. And then, of course, Raquel popped over here at the end, had to review the final draft financial statement. She really hadn't seen a lot of, a lot of the document before that. So they were both great help. You have great employees here. With regard to the financial statements themselves, I will try to keep this relatively short. If you have any specific questions, I will be happy to entertain them, or certainly Kara can answer them. If they're particular, in any particular way, we can get back to you with regard to them. But as an overall statement with regard to your statements themselves, you have what's referred to as a clean report letter. You have no findings within your report letter, not only in the governmental financial statements, but as well as the statement or the report that we give you on internal controls. So the internal controls here in the town of Bristol are where they need to be in terms of applying with or complying with the standards, the accounting standards. So we look at laws and regulations. We look at things like your charter. We look at your ordinances, and on a sample basis, we obviously don't pick them all, and we test your internal controls. So we're happy to tell you that your particular report has no findings, and your report is clean. The report itself is pretty lengthy. I'm assuming you may have gotten electronically. So I know nobody wants to print it. I printed it, because I like paper still, you know, 40 years. I see that Mary likes paper, too. This is good. The two Marys like paper. So I printed it. But the document itself is broken down into a number of sections that are required by what we refer to as the GASB, the governmental accounting standards. So the first section of the financial statements is the management discussion and analysis, and that's where the town has the opportunity to tell the reader, in layman's terms, the results of this year's financial budgetary, if you will, results, as well as anything that is governmental. So more often than not, at this particular point, the auditors draft that for you. They give you an opportunity to fill in some of the blanks. It's somewhat a template. The AICPA has sort of set, set up a template and said, these are the aspects that need to be included in the document. And what you're seeing is the same information that you're seeing in the remaining part of the document itself, but you're seeing it in a condensed format. So then, following that, is what we refer to as the government-wide financial statements. And those financial statements are prepared on the accrual basis of accounting, and that is different from how you do your budget. That is different than how you keep your books and records on a daily basis. A number of years ago, the governmental accounting board determined that there was no comparison between large corporate America and cities and towns. And so they incorporated the accrual basis of accounting for cities and towns. So the governmental-wide financial statements that you see at the front of your document include all of your liabilities. So they include your pension liabilities, as well as your other post-employment benefits liabilities. They include all your capital assets. You'll notice when you look at your fund financial statements, you expense a capital asset, a capital improvement, through the budgetary process. Well, you bring those items back into the balance sheet, if you will. It's called the statement of net position, but it's the balance sheet in the, in the layman's terms. And you report those assets and those liabilities on your books. Following the government-wide financial statements, you have your fund financial statements. So here in, in Bristol, your fund financial statements and your budgetary are very similar. You don't have a lot of differences. There are some communities where there are differences, where you budget, your budget is on the cash basis, and your, your government financial statements are on a different basis. But here in Bristol, you're on the same basis. So your budgetary fund balance and your government fund balance are the same. Following that are the notes to the financial statements. They are required, and what they really do is they supplement the statements that I just discussed. So the first part of the, the notes to the financial statements provides you with an overview of what the significant accounting policies are here in the town. And then there are significant notes that provide you with more detail. For an example, you'll have a capital asset note, and that capital asset note will tell you the breakdown of those assets. So what is infrastructure? What is buildings and improvements? What's vehicles? And so on and so forth. Where in the statements themselves, you're only seeing the totals. The same is true when you get to your debt note. Your debt note's very important. You have a number of pieces of debt here in, in Bristol, as well as other liabilities, pension liabilities, OPEB liabilities. You have what's referred to as compensated absences. That's your accrued vacation and sick time. So those liabilities are all described in that note to the financial statements. Following that note, you generally will see, yes?
I just had a quick question on that. When you talk about the police pension liability, you're talking about the closed police pension plan, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. But we're also talking about all of the other plans that you have here within the town.
Right.
So you have the state plans, so you have the teachers' plan, the municipal plan, but you also have that closed police plan. That is a fiduciary fund. So beyond, so if we want to walk through all the pages, and I know I'm supposed to keep this relatively short, so, and Kara will tell you, I can talk forever on pensions and, and other post-employment liabilities. But the fiduciary funds are reflected in your financial statements here. And what that fiduciary fund does, the combined information is in the back, but that's your closed police plan plus your OPEB. And they're combined to be considered a fiduciary fund. So they're funds, basically, that the town can't use for any other purpose, but to pay, basically, health care for retirees, other post-employment benefits, and then your pension retirees. Beyond the notes to the financial statements, are the section of the, and this also came into play when GASB 33 came into play, something called required supplementary information. And it's a little confusing to some of the communities because you say, or you'll say to me, or some, some communities will say to me, why is my budget in all different places? And it's just as a result of the GASB and their interpretation of what should be required supplementary information and what should be supplementary information. So what they determined early on is that anything that was budgetary, a budgetary fund, that was a governmental fund, it would be considered required supplementary. If you had a proprietary fund, so in your case, your sewer fund, what they would do with that is they would call it supplementary. So what that really means is, although the state of, the state of Rhode Island has implemented a number of requirements on their own, the supplementary section of your financial statements are just that, supplementary. So based on governmental standards, you could cut your financial statements off at the RSI and not have to report any of the additional information. The state of Rhode Island, through the Attorney General, has made additional requirements for that supplementary information. And so that's why you're seeing it here. So some of the statements are unique to Rhode Island. So if you were to compare your financial statements to Connecticut or to Massachusetts, some of those statements wouldn't exist. So that's really an overview of the packet and, and what you have in front of you with regard to the financial statements. With regard specifically here to the town of Bristol, page 93 will, will point out for you the budget and actual results. And the couple of things that you want to take away from on page 93 is that, in terms of your anticipated revenue for taxes, your, you, your results of this particular year was about $1 million, a little bit more, $1,075 more than was anticipated. In addition to that, your user fees, in particular, the ambulance fees, were also higher than you anticipated. So in terms of revenue, your revenue budget showed a very, very strong result this year. You had $1.5 million more than you had anticipated when you started the year and you put your budget together. Now, on the expense side, you had a couple of areas where you had some deficits, if you will, or shortfalls from what you had initially planned on with regard to the budget. So that totaled about $300,000, a little bit over 300. The biggest portion was in your general government line item, or line items, I should say, where the shortfall was about $210,000. And then, above and beyond that, it was just $85,000, a little bit under 100, for your fire building and vehicle repairs, and a little bit in your other program expenses. So...
Are you referring to page 94? Are you, are you referring to those general funds?
Yes, 93, I think.
Overages?
I think it's 93, but yes.
93.
I could be wrong. You could be right. 93.
Okay.
So you see on 93, your overall surplus in your revenue from your anticipated budget was $1.5 million, the majority of which came from taxes. And you see that you did overspend some of your expenditures to the tune of $382,000, most of which was in the general government. most of which was in the general government area. Now, on a regular basis, I'm assuming you receive from your treasurer monthly reports or quarterly reports. So the detail of what was in that general government would have been provided to you by Julie when she provides you the reporting on a monthly basis. So I don't have that detail with me today, but we could provide you with the detail of what's in there, although I believe if you, am I correct? Yes, you're receiving that on a regular basis. And we didn't have any significant audit adjustments. So what you would have received for your June 30 reporting would have been what you're seeing here in the financial statements themselves. Besides that, those are the big issues. I know everyone's told me to keep this short and I can go into.
She keeps looking at me when she says I don't.
I know. It wasn't you, though, see that? But you're the chairman.
That's where the direction came from.
So I don't want to get in trouble here.
Yeah. No, it's, obviously, this is outstanding news.
It is. It is. This town has done an awesome job. I mean, we, you know, 40 years I've been doing governmental accounting. I do no tax work at all. So all I do 12 months out of the year is cities and towns audits, most of the time. That's all in the fall. We have a number of Massachusetts communities that get done in the spring. And then once we get past the federal deadline, which is March 31st, we spend time from March 31st till when we start the audits again, doing planning for communities. We do a lot of consulting for communities. We've done a lot of work with school departments and their student activity funds and areas where communities over time have struggled with. So my staff, Cara in particular, this is what we do. So a lot of times auditing firms do municipal audits as a fill-in. That is not at all what we do as a firm, so.
Well, I'd like to take a moment to thank Julie, who's not here.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Hopefully she's watching from Charlestown, right? So thank you for her efforts and energies. Thank you, Raquel, and thank both of you. And then obviously to all of the town, including the administrator. There's a lot of, this doesn't happen by accident.
It does not. It does not.
This is a lot of hard work.
It's a huge document. It's a huge document. And it requires a lot of town efforts and help to put the document together, even after we've performed the audit. Because at the end of the day, this document is your document. Our report in this document, and I know it sounds kind of silly, but the report letter in the front of this document that gives you the clean report, or what we refer to as an unmodified report, and the yellow book report, which is way at the end of this document, are the only two documents within this entire 200-page almost financial statement that is ours. The rest of it is the town's. Now, we as auditors have always helped all of our communities draft their financial statements, but in essence, they're your financial statements. So you should be very proud of them.
I did neglect it to also thank my colleagues too, because this is, we spend a lot of time and energy coming up with a budget that's presented by the administrator, but ultimately the conversations that go into this and others is a lot. So this is outstanding to hear that the systems that we have in place are working and working very well.
They are.
So thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome.
My colleagues have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to comment, Raquel. On page 94, where the excess expenditures over appropriations, I'm just wondering if we should, at budget time, since we're doing a good job staying on that track, should we be looking at areas where we should be budgeting more appropriately? I'm seeing municipal observances, that pesty one that keeps coming back every year. And then, you know, just maybe those other items. And I don't remember what goes into these, so maybe I could work with you offline to understand what they are. I'm sure they're all appropriate, but I just want to make sure we're budgeting properly for these line items.
I talked to the Attorney Administrator and we've talked to Cara to maybe bring that forward, line item adjustments, so we'll give you a better idea quarterly on how.
That'd be great.
Exactly.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just have one more question for you before you leave. In terms of, you said you worked with a lot of towns and municipalities. How does Bristol compare to other towns that are kind of like our size? Like very favorably? Are we kind of about the same? Are there areas of?
No.
Like you've never seen something so good, my god, how do I? I'm giving you just, you know, a range.
Maybe I should let Cara answer the question, since she did the fieldwork. But from reviewing the work papers, Bristol is way up there in terms of an A community.
Mike, could you rewind that a little bit on the tape and just play it again? Thank you.
Bristol is way up there in terms of an A community. And you know, it's really all about your personnel. Because they're the, your staff are the ones that are interested in getting it right, interested in getting it done timely. And that's what's important. And you know, at the end of the day, without your staff, these are your financials again. They're not mine. So at the end of the day, that's what you're getting. And just as Raquel just indicated to Timothy, we're looking at, and have already talked about, doing line item transfers mid-year. Because what you want to do when you do your budget is you want to look at all that historical data, but sometimes unforeseen expenses come up and you want to be able to expend them because you have the resources. But on the other hand, it's going to throw you over budget. So should you make a budgetary adjustment at that time, knowing that you are approving that additional expenditure for whatever that purpose is? So.
And do we want to approve it?
And do you want to do it?
Or do we take measures to, hey, we're not going to go any further with this. We have to do an adjustment in something, this event or whatever, we have to change course.
Exactly. Now, this particular year, you put aside $525,000, if I remember correctly, out of surplus, and you didn't even need it, right? Because you had the surpluses or the additional revenue that you had collected. But had you not collected those additional revenues, you may have had to dip into your surpluses. And you're right, maybe at that point, you'd say, I don't want to approve this. I want to put this off to fiscal '21 or fiscal, you know, '22, depending on how expensive the item is, whether we're talking about something you're going to bond or something you're going to buy out of surplus, whether or not you want to make those adjustments mid-year. But it's important to look at your budget on a regular basis.
Oh, yeah.
So Mr. Clerk, could you help us with, is just accepting this annual financial statement report?
Yes, that would be the motion.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and the clear explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. And anytime if you have any questions with regard to the financial statements themselves, certainly through Cara or through Steve, you're more than welcome to contact us and we will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is first in the individual council member agenda items, the chairman's prerogatives.
So I said a lot tonight, so I'll just make it real quick. The administrator and I met with DOT yesterday. Hopefully, there should be some updated information coming out in a few weeks about progress with Silver Creek. Nothing concrete at this point in time, and actually, the chief was there and some others. But we should have some information. And I must say that their response, their willingness to make sure that the conversations that have happened in the past with signage and all of that was outstanding. We have great local representation and they're very sensitive to how it affects, how it's going to affect, how it's currently affecting, and very quick to make sure that we know what's going on as soon as they can share new information. So should have some updates in a couple of weeks on that. The administrator and I also met with Dr. Bryce, actually, the administrator met with Bryce, and we had a conference call on Monday to talk about the upcoming budget. And we, obviously, we stayed 5,000 foot, so nothing too much at this point, but just trying to get a better feel of what the request is going to be this year and make sure there's no surprises. There's a willingness on both sides to make sure that we get to a place that everybody wins. Because I know we all care about the health of the school and obviously, ultimately, the kids. So that's what I had. Have a great night.
Mr. Sweeney?
Well, Bristol did it again. Looks like we got another award, a grant award for $500,000 for the design of the permitting of the bike path connector from the campus of Rogers Williams University to the East Bay Bike Path. So I just think this is amazing. It's great. It's going to provide critical economic, public health, and natural resource benefits. And so Diane, thank you, and to your team, Ed and Chris and whoever was involved, great job on the grant. I mean, that's awesome. I think that is just a huge win for getting those kids down into town and spending their money and enjoying the beautiful town and the harbor. So thank you very much for all your hard work on that.
Diane, thank you for that. And Chris, you'll remember Chris Vitale, when we were doing the Connect Newport and we were going around to all the businesses downtown and everything like that, and we were at the Beehive, and they said, wouldn't it be great if there could be that bike path from Roger Williams to downtown?
Yeah.
That just connects and dumps people off downtown, so.
And then finally, there's going to be a Bristol Book Fest on March 27th to the 28th. You can get information at thebristolbookfest.com. It's going to be, I'm talking about a book called All the King's Men, which I haven't really read. But anyway, I just wanted to give it a blast because arts in the common and the Bristol Arts Free Library are doing it, and so just wanted to get it out there. So go right out to bristolbookfest.com to get all that information.
You have two months. It's no problem. So you don't have time to read it.
Yeah, I have time to read it. Yeah, good. Anyway, have a great night.
Mr. Texira?
I don't have much to say, other than just compliment on the bike path. I think that's a wonderful way to, for accessibility. I see the students trying to walk over roots and weave through the trees, but now they will have a much more direct path to get, to see, you know, to come and enjoy things in downtown. So certainly, it's very much appreciated. So thank you.
Ms. Pirella?
I don't have too much either, but the bike path, that's great to hear that news. And I think that was one of their community service projects, wasn't it? One of the designs at their, one of the presentations either last year or the year before. I don't know if we're going to go with that plan, but that was one of the.
So, and thank you for bringing that up. That was, actually Walter Burke had started that Community Partnership Center project with the students, and I sort of inherited that when Walter retired. And I just want to say, with regard to that study, that was somewhat academic in nature, although it was a little bit of a kickstart. But this funding will allow us to do an alternatives analysis, come up with a preferred route. There is right now no preferred route, just so people don't think that we're going to do the plan that the students presented.
But we may.
They may.
Right.
They may. And there's also time built in for presentation back to the council. So once the alternative analysis is completed, and then they'll be presenting back to the town, once the route is, you know, agreed upon, then they'll move into the preliminary design. And so the grant is a lot, but it's, there are a few steps involved permitting, land surveying, and things like that. So it's, but it will start with an alternatives analysis to fix, to figure out the route.
I'm sure it's going to take some time because of all of those things. What is the projected, you know, start and date, like a couple of years from now?
Can I excuse, at this point, just a quick motion to add to the agenda because now we're going back and forth. I want to keep in compliance with open meetings law.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
It's in the consent agenda.
It's in the communications.
It's in the communications.
Okay, fine, as long as it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks for letting the air out of the balloon. Come on.
Yeah, so this, we have, I believe we have two years to go through the design process with the grant. And then we'll move from there into the next phase of implementation.
Diane, remind, typically, we have a 20% to a 30% match for a grant.
That's right.
So it's $500,000, Diane, how much are we matching?
Zero.
Thank you.
No match.
There is no match.
No match.
So who is this from?
DM, it's the Green Economy Bond.
Okay.
Just for reference, Mr. Chairman, it's found at HI, excuse me, HH 19 on the consent agenda.
Maybe we could point that out to the solicitor. I'm okay with it, so.
I guess I didn't read that.
It was, it was.
The 385 page.
I'm just having fun. But we slowed down. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Are we all set?
Yeah, we're all set, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lay.
Well, that shows how integrated this is too, because when we have people bringing their bikes downtown, they're not bringing their cars and taking up a parking space and everything like that. And they're all getting healthy and probably spending a little bit more time downtown. One of the things I want to talk about today, and I don't want to take up too much time, but I had an opportunity with Councilman Sweeney to attend a discussion about climate resiliency and things like that, kind of what other communities are starting to do with this, to build more resilient infrastructure and that kind of thing. And one of the things I'd like to do maybe in the coming years is have more of a conversation with some of my colleagues about what are some of the things that we can do to encourage people to perhaps build more resilient infrastructure on their own properties? Are there ways that we can maybe use the tax code or anything like that to incentivize certain types of things, or at least not to penalize people who decide to do those types of things to their property? So with that being said, hopefully, I'll be sharing some ideas with you guys in the coming months, and hopefully, we'll have a good dialogue about that.
Well, we don't want to be too competitive because little companies apply and is competing for that.
Town Administrator Agenda Items.
Thank you. I've been in touch with the Department of Transportation regarding the traffic lights on Medicum Avenue. They're anticipating the end of February for completion of the signals system. They're going from a loop system on the roadway, which is magnetic, to a camera system. And it's also important to note that those are not enforcement cameras. Those are for traffic coordination and efficiency only. So we're hoping that once this is done, traffic should be moving much smoother on Medicum Avenue. So that's all I have. Good night.
I think you need to reiterate that, though, I mean, if you don't mind, because, you know, we always see, you see in social media and you see just in people's conversation that they, that the cameras are suspected to be traffic enforcement cameras.
Yeah.
And I know that they're not, you know, but in other cities, they clearly are. So I think if you could just reiterate that point and continue to remind people that that is not what we're doing.
Right, yeah, they're not enforcement cameras.
There have to be signs telling the public.
No, I know, yeah.
If those signs aren't there, they cannot be used.
And actually, we'll just take one more second. It's a great point, is that those cameras allow the lights to sync to each other. And when they sync to each other, you don't have backups. And currently, if you drive down, and Steve had just shared this with me recently, is that, yo, Anawambska is a camera light. Chestnut is a timed light at the moment. So you go through a green light to a red light, and then it turns green, but then Anawambska turns red, and you can already see what's happening, right? You get the queue. So once this is done, the traffic should move smoother. And as the administrator pointed out, there's an opportunity for, as traffic gets a little bit more difficult with 114 with the bridge, those can be adjusted by DOT, right? That's all we have. So we just need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Great. Good night, everyone.